...to order, verify compliance with open meetings law and adopt the agenda. If you can please stand, draw me in the pledge of flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number three is comments from the audience regarding agenda items. As a reminder, comments can only be made about items listed on the agenda for this meeting. This is the only time audience members may comment on current agenda items during this meeting. Before addressing the board, please state the agenda item number that you are speaking about, your name and your address. You may speak for a maximum of five minutes. Do you have any comments? Okay, seeing none, move on to item four. Student and staff spotlight. Jackie Winter will introduce item 4A, the Excellence in Language Study Award.
So I would like to introduce to you Natalia Delat. She teaches French at the high school. She is going to tell you about the student award. And I just want to highlight real quick, as long as she's here. I was in her AP class the other day and it's really exciting. Our students were using a Google Doc to correspond with students in France around their election. It was really exciting to watch the kids be able to interact and ask questions. And, you know, they even asked questions of Natalia, "Is this appropriate for me to ask?" So it was really exciting to watch. So as long as you're here, who doesn't see you?
Well, thanks Jackie. As she introduced me, I teach students to communicate in a language other than their own. I also teach them to accept different points of view on mundane things such as drinking hot chocolate out of a bowl. It's not better or worse, it's just different. And I also, since I teach teenagers, I try to burst their little bubble and open their eyes into a beautiful and ugly world outside of their community, outside of their country. And Wisconsin Association for Language Teachers allows me to nominate one student per year who excels in all of the above. And I'll give you a quick confession here. In my 13 years teaching at Wisconsin, I've never felt strongly enough to nominate a student until I met Lori. She epitomizes everything this award is about. She has achieved in one semester in my class, something that I have not seen students achieve in three years. She is dedicated, motivated, refreshingly positive and upbeat, always willing to take risks, do her best, and for that she receives Excellence in Language Study Award for demonstrating great achievement and exceptional potential for word language learning.
Where are you going?
I learned Spanish for a while when I was younger, but I dropped out of language learning for a couple of years. And I'm a sophomore and I thought, "Why not take up French?" It had always been really interesting to me. And so I'm in a class with freshmen right now, so I'm outside of, you know, my friend group, so I'm really able to focus on just studying and learning. But through that, I am able to just excel and be so excited about the French language. I never thought that I would be so interested in learning about a different culture and new people, but because of what Madame has taught me, I'm so interested in looking more into the culture and going to school in France or studying abroad because of all of the things that I've learned. And I'm so excited to continue learning for the rest of the time that I went to high school. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, thank you for that. It's a great way to start the meeting. Item 4B is building news, so we'll start with Lori in Hales Corners Elementary.
Oh, congratulations to a former HCE student, so.
Um, yeah, I know, I had to do that shameless plug. So it's been really busy, really busy since the last time I was able to talk with you about what's been going on at HCE. So even with a short little holiday break in there, we've been able to have our Artist in Residence program. We had a poet come to school and meet with the kids, talk with the kids. Always inspiring to hear from somebody who's actually doing what they do during the school day in the sense of learning that's doing that for a career. We had our project fair, Basket Bash, Ice Cream Social at the tail end of April. Very busy, very active, lots of fun and kids showing off the work that they did at home. I didn't, you know, I just didn't time myself real well and didn't get downstairs to listen to music, but we did have our students perform instrumentally as well. Let's see, it was a really interesting day. At the tail end of April, I was able to have an assistant principal for the day. So Kat Majewski had won a raffle of sorts and was one of the two students that were selected. So I had a third grader and thanks to Dr. Olson, we had a little, did a little video chat with her during the morning so that she could kind of talk a little bit about, you know, meet the superintendent, find some things out about her, and then talk a little bit about how her day was going to go. So I kept her busy, gave her a walkie-talkie and, you know, put her on her way supervising kindergarten recess and a variety of other things. We did have also just last week, our Aces Day, which is all children exercising simultaneously. It's a nationally recognized day. We've been doing this for the last seven years. We had a walk that we've done the last seven years for Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, which is really, obviously, all the money that we're raising is to hopefully find a cure someday for T1 diabetics. And we have a couple of those students at our school. I love this program because they come out a number of weeks in advance and do educational programming. So they talk to all the grade levels, to all the students, and really help them understand a little bit about T1 diabetes and builds, I think, some compassion for understanding some of their classmates that might be T1 diabetics. So, and then finally, last week, we had our kindergartners and our first graders perform for their spring concerts. So that was, it's always fun to see them perform and, you know, see the parents waving at them from the, you know, the stage and back and forth. I don't know, it's just always a great time to have family come and join us for those concerts. So that's what's been going on at HCE.
It was nice for the project fair with the music in the basement. Instead of having the whole group perform, they got to select different songs and some were doing duets or solos or I think there was a group of six brass. It was neat to have the different format, they could play as many songs as they wanted and little duets and it was cute. Roman really enjoyed it and a lot of the parents enjoyed the feedback.
Yeah. And that's a nice, that's a bigger space down there to be able to, and I guess it was really well, really well attended. I was, sorry, I was by the ice cream, but only to make sure that they had enough hands. I wasn't really eating anything, so they went to the project, so, thanks.
The hobo is better to happen in the basement if they're new players, right? So I think last time I highlighted a bunch of things that were, I foreshadowed, all of those events went very well. So I'll just cast forward again for this one. Both Lori's students and ours, our students are starting our MAP testing for the next couple of weeks. Lots of testing jam-packed into May, but we use all of this data to help kind of close up the year and take a look at the assessments and how students have successfully completed the year, as well as take a look at, you know, scheduling our classes for next year. So really important. Principal Coffee tomorrow at 8:30, so stop on by if you'd like, Starbucks and Pastry. I'll mainly be talking about personalized learning plan for next year at Ederton. May 11th is our K4 Mother's Day program. Mrs. Keenigs does a great job with our four-year-olds celebrating our moms this week. The 17th, 18th and 19th, our fifth graders, will be going on their second annual camping trip to the Dells area. That teacher can talk to you a little bit more about it if you'd like. Canoeing, island hikes, survival skills, pond study, ropes courses, team building activities, all facilitated by naturalists. It's a wonderful opportunity. Our kids have a great time and this will be our second year going. We have forest field trips that are coming up in, not this week, but next week and the week after that. So we have a number of activities planned for all of our students at all grade levels that will be happening in the forest and our high school students help facilitate those. And then we have a lot of things coming up, so make sure to check our program. We have the Color-a-thon. At Ederton, we collected over $20,000 this year, our PTO. It's been very successful, so we're really going to enjoy that race. Dare Graduation in Tailgate. Jonathan, you're probably going to be getting an invite to that because the president typically comes to those, so be looking out for that as well as Mrs. Olson. Oh yeah, you have to give a speech. A little, just a little one. Ms. Byrd gave the speech the last couple of years and did a fine job. Fifth grade concerts, band and orchestra concert and field day and a whole lot more coming up in the next few weeks. Very busy last couple of weeks of the year. That's it.
We're not busy at all at the middle school this time of year.
Thanks for sharing.
We just finished off our spring carnival, which you had the students here presenting a few weeks back, and they were unveiling their plans and getting things together. So that came to fruition on Friday night, had the whole school sort of overtaken and overrun with all kinds of fun activities. Everything from the dance, which was middle school students only, to a games area in the large gym. The games were very cute because the students designed pretty elaborate games of Plinko and ring toss and so they had, you know, for tickets, you could go and play the games. And we had a digital virtual photo booth where some of the HelpDust students created a green screen, so for two tickets, you could get your picture taken with your friends against the backdrop of Paris or a carnival or a merry-go-round or the Grand Canyon. So they were having a good time with that as well. So all in all, it was a very successful event. We raised, we don't know how much money yet because the young lady who was really chairing the whole thing was pretty wiped out and not there today, so when she returns, we saved all the exciting money counting for her when she comes back. So today, because we are made of money, we started our Walk-a-thon kickoff, so now we begin our Walk-a-thon fundraiser. And this year's fundraiser is going to be for Jordan Guzman, who is our student that is undergoing treatment for a brain tumor currently. So today, students saw a video that Jordan and his family and teachers helped co-create and then eighth grade students went around and presented to other classes, gave a presentation on the Walk-a-thon, what it is, why it is, and why we're coming together for that cause for Jordan. So that will take place May 26th, so fundraising will be fully underway. You'll see things in the eWeekly and other communications as we move forward with that. This week is Concert Marathon beginning tomorrow night. We have sixth grade concert Tuesday night, seventh grade concert Wednesday night, eighth grade concert Thursday night, and then I think a music department collapse happens sometime on Friday night. And then our New York City trip is taking off early in the morning. They will convene at the airport at 4:15 on Tuesday morning. So if you want to see middle schoolers like with no energy, go to the airport at 4:15 on Tuesday morning.
Thank you.
So the high school happily finished testing. We have wrapped up Aspire as well as Forward. We're just into a few makeups. We will have some very happy AP students at the end of this week. This week, AP Bio was today, AP Calc, AP French tomorrow, Economics on Wednesday, English on Wednesday, and Thursday is AP History and Stats. And then a second, Economics on Friday, which should leave a few very tired and hopefully with really good scores that will help them in the future. We had our NHS induction on Friday night as well as senior athletic banquet last night. Lots of great attendance. Just going back to the AP testing, if you're here walking around at night or even on a Saturday or Sunday, I just want to point out the efforts of the teachers to help to prepare them. We have had endless sessions. I think Nancy Sarno may have set a record. She has been here quite a bit, pizza included, music, all in preparing for the test, so I appreciate the efforts of our teachers. So nothing big and exciting this week other than testing and hopefully lots of people buying prom dresses and good stuff like that, spending your money.
One team to eat.
There you go.
She thought it was, I don't want to say. She thought it was in a bag and it was actually the color of the dress. So I wonder if she knew what she was ordering.
All right, thank you all. Number five is reports. First will be committee reports. Stephanie will provide a report for the May 1 Finance Facilities Meeting.
So we met May 1st and it was for the sole purpose of discussing financial strategy in the UZ Act 32. And those recommendations will be coming to the board soon for us to get those in. And it was short and sweet and we adjourned at 7:30.
There's no report for personnel because we did not have a meeting. Quinn can provide a report for the policy meeting that happened today and then also a teaser for the SWSA meeting tomorrow.
A teaser?
Teaser.
Well, my teaser is ahead a week or eight, a week early. So we met regarding policy 421 slash 421R. There's going to be, it's going to come to us, there's going to be a little verbiage change and then maybe some big verbiage change, so we'll get it at the next meeting?
No, June 12th.
Okay.
Because it'll be committee the whole first, yep.
So that's what I know about that. As far as SWASA, it is mental health. I'm looking forward to it. I have to start a job at 7, but I should be there by 7:30-ish. And we have a whole lineup of dignitaries coming and speaking about it. And I think it's, as we have approved a new position and as Stephanie has said that we could use another one, I think it's really imperative that we really take in all of this we can because we want to help our kids as best we can and we want to help them to be safe and we want them to be healthy and this is part of the mental health. So I'm looking forward to the meeting tomorrow. I get to see Mike?
You get to see Jackie.
All right, Jackie, for sure. See you then.
Okay, thank you. 5B is superintendent report.
As I've been reporting each month, I've been taking the district goals and giving you the progress that we've had since the last time we reported. So I'll do the same. First goal is talking about a roadmap and timeline for a K-12 personalized learning district. So last time we met, we were previewing what was happening, but on Tuesday, April 24th, we held two meetings, one at 6:30 for our K-5 parents and one at 7:30 for our middle school parents. We had 62 parents that were registered and we had many other parents who attended via Facebook Live. It was our first time that we did that. And I think it was, it was, we really, that was the participation of parents we were very impressed with. I think each meeting that we've been holding in terms of focus groups and that, we picked up more parents. Those who have been attending continue to come back and I think the conversation continues to build around it and build a stronger base and foundation about what it is. And so that's archived, that's one of the nice things about being on Facebook Live. And so we had comments, parents who couldn't be there had comments while it was going on, so we could address those to make sure they understood that. So I think, as Chris talked about in terms of the principal chats and conversations, parents are feeling more comfortable coming and asking questions and that whole concept of what is it, being just a physical space with breaking down a wall is not what it is. So I think people are having a better understanding of what that looks like and just having the conversations out and feeling like they have places to go to answer that. So I know principals are fielding individual questions at that point, but it was a good forum to start the conversations and talk about what those district, or our school buildings look like next year. The second one has to do with the communication or communicating out how we're growing our reading and math. And so the board, two meetings ago, saw the presentation on EduClimber and we've registered some of those same people that were here and our principals will be attending. There's two different trainings this summer to continue to build the capacity about what can it do, what will we do, how will we pace that out, some of the questions that we have in terms of that. And then those teams will talk about what data do we put in there. So there's some training that we're going to use on next Monday for our staff. We're going to make sure that all of our staff are aware of that, what that looks like and what that journey looks like in terms of implementing it to house the data. It will not be just a one-year process. It will take us a while to gradually implement that and making sure that we're using it in ongoing training. Our third goal has to do with a timely and relevant communication two-way plan. We have a draft of the newsletter. Logan was out today, but we'll hopefully get that to the board. We vetted that through as we've been working, getting that survey piece in there also, and so we'll send that out for the board. Hopefully by the end of the week, we can get it out to the printer. Last Friday, we sent out our inaugural parent weekly e-newsletter. We've been talking about that. We had originally thought maybe we would wait till next school year, but we thought we wanted to give it a chance to try it for the month of May, get some parent feedback to see what was working in it, what they would suggest. And so that went out and I sent a copy to the board. So we're trying to create a more comprehensive place for parents to go to get the news. Right now, it's sort of in a variety of different places for them to go if they have, especially if you have children in multiple buildings. Where do I go, what's coming up? And if I have a high schooler but don't have an elementary student, it's also nice just to see what's happening in those buildings because I might not get those directly emailed. So we did tell parents that after the month of May, we'd be sort of reaching out and giving some feedback, what's working on that, what's not working back that. We're trying to just give them snippets of it and then taking their, so that was our, that was our first attempt on getting out a district-wide parent communication. And we also met with our website company. We're doing a website makeover and you probably don't know, I mean, on the front end of it, it doesn't look terrible at all. Behind it, it's very cumbersome in terms of organizing documents, in terms of how they're loaded, they're not structured very well, it's just not very easy to do for anybody who works on the back end of our website. And so we will be going through that this summer in terms of that. So it'll be refreshed a little bit in terms of that, but in terms of locating things in some of the menus. So all of our communication. Fourth goal had to do with the financial plan and model. What I would say right now is Mike and I are basically looking at some of the things that are coming out of the federal and state levels right now, trying to keep up with the legislation, proposed legislation, what gets passed. You know, we're all paying attention if it's ACA or if it's with ESSA that gets passed, DPIs put out a budget. So things related to special education, Medicaid and school choice are all things that would have dramatic impact on us, so we're trying to watch that legislation, decide when we either need to take action or write on it and try to build that into the financial model and see what swings that could mean in terms of our budget planning. Integrating all of our technology, academic, business, operational systems for efficiencies. We've been talking about looking at our reporting to parents on report cards. Right now, we're pretty sure that we can do a better job on giving information out to parents through the report cards, so it's a little bit more meaningful at all levels. What that looks like, we're not quite sure. We just started exploring those conversations. How might EduClimber be a piece on that? I think that was explored a couple of weeks ago. Both Mike and Karen have also gone out to the buildings and did the open enrollment meetings. We're hoping that those communications and having face-to-face meetings with the vendors and that provided employees with information to make decisions based on their benefits and to continue to help them understand their benefits a little bit more, so they're making the best choices there. And then goal number six, the standardized customer service protocols. I'm happy to announce that between Greenfield, Greendale and Whitnall School Districts, we submitted a grant through the state. It's called a WAT grant through the Technical College. So MATEC would be providing training to our support staff personnel. We've also extended that to the municipalities. So the Village of Hales Corners, City of Greenfield and Village of Greendale also could have their support staff employees. So collectively, they would do customer service training and protocols as a collective region. And right now, the, they say whatever that means, the odds are pretty good because of the collective impact that we put together with all of those organizations of having that. So we're excited about that. I think sometimes our support staff, our groups of employees, that we don't always think about as much as we do some of our educators in providing them some of that training. So we're very excited about that collaborative grant and obviously, should we get awarded that grant, it will come back to the board for approval in terms of all that. So it's still a little preliminary, got submitted on April 30th to the state and I think they are supposed to know first to June maybe whether or not we do that, so. Facilities planning and strategic planning. Again, our date for our strategic planning, June 15th, we're starting this week, we're going to go big in our social media piece with that. We're going to start out with a cookout at 5:30 to 6:30, a community cookout that leads into our strategic planning at 6:30. Thought that would be a good way to start that out and build a little bit of camaraderie before we did that. We've met, I think, two or three times last week with a survey company to sort of finalize what that survey looks like and have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow to put that final survey for strategic planning within the newsletter, if you will, and are just getting ready to schedule next week with Bray Architects again and with the elementary principals, their next phase as they finalize some things and getting together with that. The elementary principals have also put together some potential projects with the personalizing learning spaces for next year, as we talked before, to make sure they don't contradict or in terms of any long-term plans, it would be not the best use of money in terms of spaces that might be looked at bigger than that. So, and most of them, I think, are doable in terms of that, so.
I have a question. Can we just clarify the record in regards to EduClimber?
Sure.
That it didn't get passed by the board. It didn't need to get passed by the board.
Correct.
It was under the $15,000.
That is correct. That is correct.
It was just, that's what it was.
That was correct, yep. I stand corrected from the previous time in terms of it needing there. So it was talked about, but it was not officially approved. You are correct. Yep.
All right, so thank you. 5C administrative reports. First will be 2017, 2018 school board meeting dates.
They're in the packet.
So there's two days, so the 25th and 28th, both fall on holidays. So we'd have to look at how we want to change that, correct?
So I put, what I did was I just took the calendar, I picked off every second, fourth Monday so that you would see the consistency. And then I put in red what your holidays are, so you need to decide if you want to just go with one meeting that month or maybe you want to switch it and do a first and third Monday or however you want to arrange your meeting dates. But those were the holidays that fall this year.
Okay. So looking at December, would everyone be okay with having dual meetings on the 11th? Like we have in the past. Exactly, just want to make sure we want to do that for next year. Okay, so for the 11th, it'll be a dual meeting. Now for May, would we want to do the 14th and the 21st? Since it's getting closer to the end of the school year, gives us another meeting in case we need to use it.
We're the 7th and the 21st. I mean, we could always move the one back and, I mean.
I mean, we could, you're right. So you made what, do we need two or?
Yeah, and I, what I would, I do, I do think you need two in May. There's so much happening in school districts right now related to personnel and we would really struggle only having one in May, yeah.
I agree. So do we want to put two weeks between them or just one?
I think let's just, if we can only, if we can get away with just changing one date, change the 28th to the 21st and let's keep the 14th and the 21st. Is everyone okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, so then, so be it.
Do you still get holiday pay?
Yeah.
Do you do? Do we get it last year?
All right, thank you. Okay, so second is Mike with the monthly financials.
Yeah, just wanted to start to throw some additional information your way. This is at the recommendation of Robert W. Baird as we start to begin to look at financial strategy over the course of next year, putting ourselves in the best position should we need to go out and borrow. Some of the questions that our bond rating agencies might ask is, does the board see monthly budget reports? Do they see where cash sits? You know, do they, what sort of information does the board get? And so you may have seen these before and maybe they were stopped. And so we're going to bring some of these pieces back in, specifically this budget piece. And then forthcoming will be where our cash and investment returns, our massive investment returns at .0001% or something. So you'll see those pieces, but it's not meant to be acted on, it's simply in the board packet for informational purposes. But if you do have questions on it, just make sure you kind of give me a little bit of leeway on that as we're talking about fairly large categories here with detail, lots of detail behind each of these pieces, where if you go, "Mike, why is that at 187% of the budget?", you can take a look and get a response during the board meeting, so.
So with just being May and end of the year being fiscal end of the year being June 3, how are we looking?
Yeah, so right now, we have one, as far as where we're coming from the budget.
Yeah.
So we have a couple areas, it's going to be a lot of the same story, but detail behind this. We have a couple areas in which- We have a couple areas in which we are certainly over budget, in which there were areas that we didn't budget enough for. But we do have some, an area underneath teaching and learning in which we could have some surplus there. So it's a matter of trying to match up those two pieces on the expenditure side. On the revenue side, we're pretty much, revenues are very, much easier to budget for, and so we're pretty much right on target with our revenues.
What are we over on?
We are over in legal costs by a fairly significant amount. And...
But that's partly because nothing was budgeted in that area.
Well, I wasn't going to say that.
Well, I think, but I think you do need to disclose it if you don't, if you budgeted zero, I think that that probably was an unrealistic budget to be given.
There are two to three line items that have significant expenditures that were at zero as a line item for budget.
And do you see us going into fund balance?
No, I think the wild card right now is special ed costs, because that's always kind of a jungle to kind of come into an organization and kind of figure out where are you with special ed costs. I think that's the swing in which we'll go, if we want to fund balance or not. But I never would foresee going to fund balance.
Never?
Well, I need to say never.
Well, you just said that in the neck of the ball.
So, did I say never? I, that's always the goal, of course. And so I think there's things that can always be done come year end to kind of make sure that you don't go into fund balance. Obviously, I feel more confident as I set up my own budget for the first time going into the 17, 18 school year, in which I know and kind of intimately create on my own, whereas I'm a little at the mercy of just numbers that I'm trying to grasp and understand. So I know my philosophy and what I do to ensure certain things from a financial strategy standpoint, but I'm lying a little bit in the seat of my pants as we get into the special ed down at the end of the year here.
So just two points of question on payments from other districts. When do we usually receive those?
Yeah, that's not until June.
Okay. And then I don't see an item here on expenditures where we have payments to other districts. Do we have any payments to other districts?
Yeah, we do. So that's going to be our open enrollment out, which would come in the form of purchased services. It falls under that 5.1 million.
Okay.
So it's just, yeah, it's just broken up differently on the expenditure side than the revenue side.
Sure. I figured it was there somewhere, but just labeled differently, so that helps. So our payment outs for other districts are a couple million higher than our payments received from other districts. Okay?
No, no, because our purchase services encumber a lot of different things. That's just a piece of it's ultimately we open and roll in more than we open and roll out.
Thanks very much.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I do, I have one. If we're going to have some overages and shortages, are you going to do budget transfers? And if so, according to our board policy, the board by two-thirds vote is supposed to approve those. How, what's your philosophy on that and how are we going to handle?
So I know that we haven't...
We've never done it in the past.
Right, right.
I mean, we've never done it, but...
Right. So I know we traditionally have not. I guess that's, we can certainly leave that up to the board. Maybe right now, it's a good discussion to have, because if that is something, we would want to bring those to the community as a whole in June and ultimately pass them in the end of the month. I understand all budget transfer is, for example, based on our conversations at the finance committing last, committee last Monday, that'd be a perfect example of using a budget transfers to be transparent about what we are doing out of Fund 41, for example. You know, areas in that we see overages or we can move money around. So that's all we're doing at that point. What that does is DPI asks that budgets, that districts use budget transfers so that we can give them more accurate information come June 30th, so that they have more accurate information to pull together state funding guesstimates come July 1. So that's the purpose. The only way I can make changes on the DPI site though is if I have the board authority to do so through these budget transfers. So that's the purpose. It's not mandatory, but it is something that shows, A, transparency and B, allows for more accurate information on DPI's side of things.
What about board memo?
It needs board action.
Right, right. And our policy would state that as well. So, I mean, I don't mind changing the policy, just figure out what we want to do together.
I think DPI requires board, you need board action.
Okay, so the policy is...
Yeah, it's your policy, it's state statute.
It's state statute.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we would need to, anytime the board would change that budget, which a budget transfer in essence does, we would then publish that in the paper as a, these are our transfers that we've made.
That's what we probably should do.
Yeah. They can be fairly broad. It doesn't have to be detailed, like, hey, in the printing area, it's fairly broad transfers, and we can show those. Fund 41, like I said, would be a perfect example of something that we would want to show. So if you're asking that, I would say yes, we want something.
Well, things change throughout the year, you know, like special ed could really throw us off, or our legal issue could throw us off. So I think, I think that bringing it to the board keeps us a little more informed as well, and the public, so.
So it's a great thing that he's bringing this out before us today.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'm not as, I'm not, I'm just not a fan of quarterly reports because what do we know? Frankly, I'm not a fan, but I'm fine, I'm fine with, you know, us doing that at this point. I'm more concerned about, we've approved a budget, I'm more concerned about the transfer piece, frankly, than the monthly reports. I mean, what can we, that's a level of detail I don't think we really need. But quarterly, a conversation for, especially for now, we're all new, I'm fine.
Yeah. I understand that the budget information that you are getting on a monthly basis, that's at the guidance of our, of our financial, you know, who are going to be going out and getting us potentially bond borrowing that they, they go, you want to get this in the board packet. And I agree with you, this detail might not, every month, you don't need to pour over it, but I do want you to know that it's there.
I think, I think it's imperative. I mean, look at West Alice. I mean, they literally did not get reports, they literally did not get, have their principals at meetings. And if we don't do these things, that's an easy stop gate. Really, I mean, it's an easy safe measure to have this.
Absolutely. It's easier to build the stories to go along and say, hey, we look like we're getting close on this, instead of coming to us in May and saying, oh, by the way, we need to do a budget transfer for this. Because then the question's going to be, why didn't you tell us ahead of time? Why didn't we know ahead of time? We're backing them into a corner. I think if they continue doing this, then it'll build a story that you want to have the conversation about budget transfers if need be. Right?
Maybe, but I, maybe a quarterly report versus every month. I mean, I, just throwing that out for discussion because...
But I'd say also, you mean...
Quarterly, you can almost tell a little bit more at the end of the quarter than having a discussion every month. But if that's what the board wants, don't waste time on me. I'm fine with it. I'm not...
You brought it before us. I mean, it's not like we're reaching over and saying, we want more than what it is. And if he's comfortable doing it, like Quinn said, I think it's imperative we get the updates so that we know what's going on.
There doesn't have to be a discussion.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be an in-depth... This discussion takes longer than it would need to just look at the numbers.
So, but the one change I did hear from Quinn was, this will be a change in practice from the board in terms of moving forward with budget transfers, because that would be something we'd bring forward in June, and that is a new practice this board has not done. But we would recommend doing that because I think it gives us better accurate, when we are doing budget to budget from year to year, it's more accurate on that. Is that what we're hearing, that that is something that the board is willing to?
So what I was trying to say is, I think that the monthly look is, I mean, you know, more data points to look at versus in bigger chunks. I kind of like the monthly look at it. And I think that publishing it in public every month is, is good communication and full disclosure for the public in accomplishing what, as you said, our financial folks have recommended for the story they're trying to tell. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Okay. The third is wonderful status update.
So this is under report, right now, not an action item. And Chris back there, who's doing a wonderful job, can be part, you can't, I think you are, you can't come up here for this conversation, truly. That's what this lovely table is for. So I think a couple of things have come to light in terms of looking, you know, like at the one-to-one piece, we've had some conversations with Chris and team in terms of when we're looking at purchases, looking at the tech plan. We've been giving this one-to-one survey for staff, parents, students for a number of years, but in terms of looking at that and understanding what that survey has been saying and the feedback we've been getting, how we've been using that in terms of decisions, and a lot of those things. So we thought it was worthy of having a conversation at this point in terms of specifically device, the goals of the technology plan, what that might look like before we just go on with business as usual or has been in terms of that. I think that, especially when you're putting, you know, significant dollars into purchases, I think it's always a good chance to look at that. And so there's some data in the packet that talks about years of devices in which they were purchased. The district has been in the habit of doing a three-year cycle on devices and sort of using that as the benchmark. And so six through 12, we are truly one-to-one. Below that, we're about eight devices per grade level.
Roughly, yeah.
Okay. So, so the conversation has come through our personalizing learning. A lot of our teachers who've been in those PLEX rooms are saying, hey, we're using technology and maybe eight devices for 24, 25 kids is not enough for us to truly do it, especially when you get, in terms of having them, they're having to sort of think about things differently than that original, hey, is eight devices enough for a grade level at that level, especially fifth grade or wherever it might be. And then the type of device, what skills are we expecting to do? What technology standards do we, literacy do we want our students to be able to develop? And probably the word that you're hearing or the phrase is that college and career readiness. What are we doing to take them from their secondary education into post-secondary education and not just the use of technology or, you know, whatever phrase you want to use in that, but is that best preparing them for whatever the world is that they see beyond that? So this is a discussion tonight to talk about that. There is no decisions being made tonight, but in terms of that, and so I'm just opening up in terms of that. I was not part of the original discussions when we were here, and so just wanting to know where we are in the journey of one-to-one and devices and everything that's there. Because I know it has come up, parents have talked to me about it, I've seen it in the survey results that are given. We've talked about it, and I know that of that I've had, you know, different board members have had just questions about it. So I thought this was the time to at least start to have a discussion about it.
Chris and Mike, would either of you like to comment on it before the board members talk? Any comments? Anything?
No, not until I hear some, I mean, I'm only bringing the financial component to it, if you want to know how much is being invested yearly or pieces like that, but...
Well, I'll start it off. I think if I'm remembering correctly, the board was, we've been Apple-focused, and there's always been a little bit of discussion at the board level about maybe looking at other devices. I think our history, we were on a rollout plan of go, of the middle school first, and as those kids grew, we needed to have a device in the hands of everyone at the high school level. So that's, as far as I know, we really didn't talk much about anything at the lower level grades, and I think that's just a snapshot of the history. There's always been debate about what year you are going to start changing these out, and we just went with what administration recommended. It wasn't a board-driven. We had some concerns, some of us did, some of us didn't, about why are we rolling these over so quick? And the, the thinking that if I remember right, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that that was the best time to resell them. You get your best dollar as well as keeping these updated.
Correct.
So I think that's how I remember it. Do you guys have other thoughts? I'm just talking about the history, going forward, if we want to look at it different. I'm fine with that. I've always thought that we should have devices in the hands of the elementary levels, because they're using them at those levels. And what, what that device is, I personally, I think that's up to you to recommend. I know these Google devices are great now, and there's more than Apple out there, although I think Apple has cornered the market for years in education, and that's just my thoughts, but...
Hold on a second. Let me just clarify something. We're not, just not if I'm wrong...
Yeah, what do you want?
Advocating that every elementary school student get a one-to-one device. What we're saying is...
Say that. I just said I'm open to that, that we should, getting them into the hands of those kids.
Okay. But I'm saying, based on her recommendation, what she was saying was that this rooms may need more devices?
Yeah.
Not necessarily every student getting a device.
Well, I'm open to whatever, again, administration recommends.
Okay.
And I agree, we need to look at that elementary level. Whether you say they need them one-on-one, then I think the board should support that. If you say we just need more, that's what we, that's how I look at it, that's a level of detail maybe we don't know.
It seems like there's a number of different points for discussion here. One is the, the level of integrating devices into the lower grades, but one is what devices to go with at pretty much any grade?
Right.
And, and then how to get there. I think I, I haven't been too cryptic about the fact that I think the iPad Mini is the wrong thing to be having as the window to the world for the kids. When 95% of the world is using PCs, we're trying to prep them for moving out into the world. So in that sense of the discussion, I think another dollar spent on iPads to do as the IT guys call tech refresh for iPads is, is money in the wrong direction. I don't know if this is the kind of discussion you're looking for, but that's, this is what I think. I've heard from multiple high school students, for example, this year, and several parents that they, they're, they don't like it at all. So they, they would like a, for example, a laptop. And there's plenty of inexpensive laptops out there, some with solid-state drives, which don't quite eliminate the idea of a crash, but it won't have a mechanical crash and better battery life. So there's, there's plenty of options out there, and I recently saw an article, in fact, I, I shared it with administration, and I think you guys had already seen it, right? About how Microsoft is trying to step up their introduction or their wedge into education by designing a version of Windows geared towards education and coming up with some, I think they even included some science experiments they were designing to share for free with, with the schools and...
I believe you have Windows 10S.
And coming up with, 10S, and coming up with some specific PCs, or no, I think they were, were they Surface, Surface?
Similar to Chromebooks.
Yeah, which is Surface, which is the Surface, I think they were talking about, which is like, is it a laptop-table combination or something like that?
Basically, yeah.
To, to target towards the middle school, high school market. So there's, there's a lot of stuff that's out there as far as buying more iPads. If we choose to change platforms and we choose to change, for example, at high school first or something like that, then it seems to me like we already own plenty of iPads to be able to share with lower grades if in fact we want to keep them on those. That would also mean if we did, say, a one-to-one tablet, I mean, sorry, a one-to-one laptop type of a scenario at the high school and maybe the middle school, it seems like there would be plenty of, I don't know, we're just starting this conversation, but maybe plenty of, of MacBooks in carts and things like that to share with the, to send to the elementary schools to, to have a more robust platform there for kids to use at more than an eight-to-one, at a better than eight-to-one ratio. That's my thought.
Okay. Quinn? You, well, I guess let's, I guess let's narrow the question down. Are you interested in reopening the discussion about if iPads are the correct option?
Of course. Yes.
And then as part of that, to determine what level they should be on the elementary level, too?
All right, you know, John sounded really good. And I, and, you know, is that, is that where we want to go? Is it, would it be a good system to have the iPads here and then the, and then the laptops here? I don't know, you gotta tell me.
But so you're interested in reopening the discussion? Okay, Stephanie?
I don't have a problem opening the discussion, I don't. I think one of the things that we've probably learned from this is that different methods of delivering technology are better with different instruments than others. There are some fine apps that I've seen used that probably have a tablet version as well as an iPad version. But it's, it's an app and a tablet or an iPad is better served to use the apps with. And yet there are Google Docs and there's science write-ups and there's papers to be written. That's not necessarily what a tablet is meant to do to type paper. And for that, a laptop is better. So I think now that we've gone through the program as many years as we have and we've got two distinct type of grade levels, middle school and high school, I think now is a good time to take a look at the use of devices and the educational tools and making sure it's appropriate. I think my personal experience with younger kids is that they do very well with an iPad because smaller hands, smaller thing, not big tippy thing like a laptop can be. And just the interaction of being able to touch as opposed to having to type and manipulate things, that might be better served for a younger age group. And the high school maybe needs laptops, but they have a key point. I, I have a personal preference for one platform versus the other. But because it's my personal preference, I'm not going to bring it up because it's what budget can do. It's what technology is recommending, it's what's going to serve our students. And that's, that's a decision that we need to make at some point. I also have come to learn that so many of these things now that are being out there as tools, it doesn't matter which platform you're using, they're going to have a version for you if you want. So I don't think we have maybe the limits we might have had before when we made the decision the first time. So it's easier to open it up and look.
Okay, great. Kevin?
Yeah, I think that we should definitely be exploring other options and what's possible, especially within the budget. But I agree with exactly what you said. I think that tablets are going to be better served in the elementary level where you said it's more hands-on. It's a lot more touching, there's not the typing aspect. Whereas in high school, you're getting prepared for college if that's what you're choosing to do for, you know, four-year, two-year, whatever it is, or even any profession for that matter, you're going to be using a regular computer more than you're going to use an iPad for the most part. And I think I could see us phasing something where we're focusing on iPads or whatever tablet we have elementary school and maybe transitioning that in middle school and then coming on to some version of a laptop or even a Surface Pro or something that's going to be more functional like a computer when it comes to high school. But yeah, I'm definitely, definitely open for more discussion regarding what we should do with that and definitely should examine it.
Nancy?
Well, I'm not going to say what everybody else has already said. So obviously I have a preference for, what I like, so.
Okay, so, and then when?
I'll just add too, because I, I, I think Stephanie nails the, why are we using them is the first question, not which device we prefer. Why are we using? What we haven't talked about is bring your own device and phones. Because there's an awful lot now that kids can do on, on those phones. And if we, I, I know some people are afraid of it, but we can't let fear drive everything. What, what else in terms of devices could we be using? Because I think we have to think out of the box. I don't think one particular device is going to meet all of our needs. There's, there's a need for both. And I, I think when it comes to the elementary level, I think there's going to have to be a time when all the kids in the class have the same, have the ability to use an iPad at the same time unless I'm, you know, missing the boat there.
You're correct in that, I think.
So I think we're going to need, if we're going to invest there, I personally think we should be looking at that at one-on-one at that level. But I'm open again to what's the educational impact? That's what's important. What kind of training is the other part?
Sure.
That we are doing with our teachers and our staff because, and our students, right? Because just handing these devices out without training, without knowing what our educational goals are is what can shoot us in the foot. So looking forward, I again will go with what you guys would recommend.
I wouldn't go, I would just say I wouldn't go so far as the bring your own device situation because there would be a lot of security concerns with that.
There would be.
We offer that now.
We have that already.
Oh, we do, good.
There'd be certain things where if you're just allowed to bring whatever or do whatever you could run into issues there.
But if we have that now, then we don't have to provide a device to every student. Then, you know, if we have that now.
And everybody has the same thing, then you run into issues there.
Correct, but if you're already managing that to some degree, but we, like you said, like I said, I don't know that we can.
They're not getting on our network. If you bring in your own device, Nancy's can get onto our public internet and that's, that's it.
I would just say, I know now we're not getting that, but I do recall a situation when I was a student where something happened and we had somebody doing things they weren't supposed to as well. And I, I know it's not happening now, but you never know. Obviously the network's different now, there was that.
Things change, right.
Yeah.
It does open up a can of worms that, on a, on a larger scale, that can be very hard to manage.
Apparently.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that we're interested in letting administration review what we're doing and consulting with staff, teachers, whomever, decide what's best. And obviously the fiscal ramifications going forward. And then give us a timeframe of how you think it'll take and come back, we can reassess it and the budget impact and go from there.
So the things that we, so Chris did a lot, he's called around and I wanted to.
Talked to a lot of the different districts, Franklin, you feel, as far as through one of our consultants here, ask them what device do you use, what grades? Have those in emails I can share with Lisa, she can share with you all. To me, it doesn't matter, the device, you know, as long as it works, you know? I, I like them both, I like them all, you know? I, I'd see John's older HP. I have one on my desk daily. I have a MacBook on my desk that I use daily. So to me, it's a device, we can make them all work.
Okay. I think ideally, I'd like, or I think we as a board should stay out of choosing the, especially at this point, choosing the specific item or product that we choose. Allow you to do the work you need to as a collective team and come back to us. We'll obviously vote on the overall merit of the product, the sound of vision you provide and then the fiscal implications it would have. But outside of that, I mean, it's, it's up to the teachers and staff, I think things are going to suit best.
Well, I would say to that too, I think especially to the high school students, I think we should, it's not out of the realm of possibilities that we shouldn't be surveying them to find out what, what prepared them or what do you think is going to help you. Because I think that's going to be the ultimate people, I mean, they're going to tell us.
Well, so I'm just going to let you know that we, you know, we have those one-to-one surveys. And I'm just going to let you know, this is, this is the word change, okay? And so when Lain talked about inservicing students, I will tell you that that's about a five-minute in-service because students pick up like this, they, they can grab anybody's device here, they can pick up your Android or your iPad, it doesn't matter. They're just going to go with it. The change element of device is really going to be our staff. And so that's one of the considerations when we've been meeting with Kat and Chris in terms of, while there's a fiscal impact on it, on top of everything, you know, with, with staff, that right now we're trying to balance the level of what a device change might mean to a staff member who is married to lesson plans that might be device-specific as compared to the fiscal outlay of a different device that basically, you know, takes that change three more years out. Because once you divide a device, it's, you know, it's, it's going to be a longer chain. That's what we're balancing right now. So student change level for us is sort of a non-issue. We've talked about that, kids can pick up anything and just go with it.
I'm more or less met, what's, I mean, obviously they can use any device.
Yeah.
Obviously, but I mean, what's working, what are they, what would they rather have? Because I know some students tell me, yeah, the iPad, I, I can't do anything with this in class. I can't take notes on it and I, yeah, we can look at a slideshow, but I can do the same thing on my laptop. Or I type something up here, I can't translate it very easily to my laptop at home where I have to print it out in this format and stuff like that. And I think that's where, what I was saying comes into play is what's going to be a better use for you. Obviously, I don't think the usage and knowing how to use is going to be a problem.
So, so I think that the compatibility issues that Kevin mentions is real. A student uses maybe a laptop or something at home to build a slideshow. They get to school, pull it up on their iPad and it doesn't look right because things have gotten all, the formatting is all different. And I've seen personal meltdowns from that. So not to be inconsiderate of the staff issues, but what we need to, the, the primary purpose of the district is the students. So we need to focus on what's the best platform to prepare the students for the future, as mentioned in the mission statement of the district, not is it going to be a little bit more difficult for the staff to endure a change? And it's not meant disrespectful to any staff. But the driving force should be what's the best platform for the students to learn and prepare for when they leave the district. That's my opinion.
I have a question. Do we have to have one or can we do multiples? Can we meet people's needs where they're at?
I think that's something they'll decide as they go through the process.
I'm asking, what do you think?
Yeah, so I think that part of it goes, this is where Chris was going to go, oh. Part of it is like, I get the having to do, so we've talked about having like, for example, iPads available still in a cart if teachers have really embedded and embraced the iPad in terms of a project, if they're using Movie Maker and whatever, and that's really easy to do from that. But the more devices that you support in terms of wanting tech support from it, or even our help desk students right now. So they've been trained to fix, you know, an iPad in terms of help desk support. It's very different if somebody brings in a laptop and they need to fix a case or, you know, a screen or whatever like that. So there's, there are, those are true tech issues, so part of it is just the level of support. So we wouldn't have to have one, we've talked about that, you know, even if we did iPads at certain grades. But to have this, you know, like anything goes is more of a management tech support issue for terms of that.
Not going to throw out any numbers, but just from looking at the emails that I've gotten responses from, like technology coordinators from the other districts, you know, your, your high school grade levels were in a physical laptop or Chromebook, something similar to, you know, keyboard, laptop, hard drive, whether you carry your hard drive with you or not, what have you. The, and that ranged from fifth grade to 12th grade and then take home, you know? But the, the younger grade levels were a lot of iPads. Either they were Surface devices or iPad, iPad minis. We can share that with you later, but just from looking at, you know, the overall, all the emails that I've gotten, yeah, seems to be the general, even as far as Monaca, you know, everybody's, everybody's going to some sort of, you know, in the higher grades, they're going to some sort of laptop or Chromebook, so.
But they're keeping iPads at the lower levels?
Yes, some sort of handheld device.
And they're finding a way.
Yeah.
Now, Mesquiko has been using Chromebooks, is that correct?
I, yes, they do. We toured their, we're in their, their tech ninja classes.
I've, I've heard that they've had some compatibility issues with Chromebooks, is that accurate?
Yeah, we talked about that, the state assessments, there were some concerns originally with Chromebooks and some compatibility things. So we, we'd want to look at whatever the laptop device is before we would just say that there is some management things that make it easy, but there's also some compatibility things that we'd want to look at in terms of that. So we definitely researched the device much more than, and there are many districts who've gone before. That's the primary source of secondary schools, so.
Thanks very much.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So item six, six A, item six is discussion, six A is superintendent job description and evaluation tool. So just a couple of notes before we begin. Dr. Olson will not be involved in the discussion because this description applies to her current role. The job description is based upon the previously selected evaluation tool. The conversation is not to review the evaluation tool as a whole, rather to determine if the description accurately reflects the tool and our expectations for the role. So with that as the next line, Nancy and Kevin, any more?
I guess I have a question because why would we exclude Lisa from the discussion on the job description? I mean, we have, at work, we have employees write their own job descriptions or are certainly involved in writing the job description. It's not necessarily the expectations of, the expectations are really based on performance evaluation. The job description is just what are the duties of the, of the job? And we always include our employees in their, in their, in their job description.
Yeah.
They're the ones who knows it the best.
So for this instance, I think we're going to not include her in the conversation. As far as evaluation, she was involved in the goal writing for that. So for this discussion, we'll just stick with us discussing the description if we're comfortable with it and go from there.
Okay.
Well.
Anybody?
I'm with Nancy on that one. And I, I admit I should have said something before the meeting and I apologize for not doing that this time. I was not expecting this format. I was expecting a narrative job description to review, not a summary of a performance report.
I think you're missing the document. The document with the job description was put in later.
I just see the evaluation document, not a job description.
It's in the folder.
And that I missed it, I did not see it.
Can we email it to you, Stephanie, see if you want to hunt for it?
I'm sorry, wait?
I can email it to you, see if you want to hunt for it.
Well, I'm in there, it shouldn't be difficult to find.
It's a three-page document.
Ah, there it is, thank you, sorry, we're good.
Wrote this in the committee?
I still agree with Nancy though.
So how involved, well, I, I certainly understand what Nancy and Stephanie are talking about because in many cases, the employer has the idea of what they want to hire for. And then when they get the person in the job, then what that person ends up doing may be incorporate some of and yet be a little bit different than what the employer had in mind. So how involved were you, Lisa, in writing this job description as we see it?
She was not.
She wasn't?
It was written by Nancy and Kevin based on the.
We discussed on the personnel committee about what we were going to do and we decided that we'd write and then Nancy ended up writing the final document, what you get before you of the job description based off the evaluation tool, based off what we already had.
I remember all that, but I thought at some point Lisa was involved in, in, in some of it, but I must have been mistaken, okay?
So, you know, there's a, there's varying schools of thought on job descriptions. My personal opinion on job descriptions is it's a summary of what the job is and it is not this extensive list of every single task that a person has to do. That's not a job description, that's a task list. And the previous job description for the superintendent was that. It was like three pages and it had every little thing spelled out exactly what that person was supposed to do. Like I said, to me, that's not a job description. So, you know, I have developed job descriptions in the past that you actually use that job description as your performance evaluation tool. So that's the approach that I took with this because it gives broad categories on what the responsibility is of the superintendent and it goes along with the performance evaluation tool that we had chosen to use.
Yes.
I agree with that, I think this is fine, I think it aligns with our tool, I think we can move forward. I just think we should be looking for specific little things in here that anyone else would want to put in it. And then the committee can, yeah, I see nothing in here that needs to be added.
That's what I'm asking for, yeah.
Right?
So does anybody have anything else that they'd like added or changed?
Hey, one, the only comment I would say is that I did give the format to Nancy because this is the format from an ADA thing that we're using for all of our job descriptions across the district. So in terms of things like you see physical demands and all of that stuff, that, that format then, the superintendent's job description would be in the same format as every other one that we're developing right now. So from that standpoint and the employee acknowledgement at the bottom, that would be the similar format. So it would not be like it's on an island all to itself, like doesn't look like anything else, so.
I see nothing in here about the superintendent buying pizza for the board, so is that just a simple oversight?
That would be a task.
Okay, Nancy and Kevin, thank you for the time and energy with this. So we'll get it together. If anybody sees anything that they'd like to consider, please let us know in between, but otherwise this will come in the next meeting for approval.
Thanks for the work on that.
Sorry it took so long.
No, you're fine, we got it done, that's all that matters.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, item six B is 2017-18 lunch prices, Mike?
Yeah, we, our, our food service director uses a, that's pretty much all in the description, uses a formula to determine what our average weight and prices needs to be across the district. Again, it's a federal worksheet because we are in the national lunch program. In essence, as it states here, next year we're getting about $2.86 for every free lunch that is, is served. And you can't be making money off the federal government. They want to make sure that you, on average, across your buildings, are charging that much based on the number of meals that are served at each of these price points. So to make the government happy, the following lunch prices at a 10% increase for next year is being recommended.
10 cents.
10 cents.
10 cents, what did I say?
10%?
Yeah, yeah, 10, yeah, I, I just work with numbers.
It's in a spreadsheet, you'd see it there.
No, no, in this place it's zero, it's, I'm joking. So 10 cent increase on average across the board. Looks like the World Flavors is a little more than that.
Yeah.
At 15 cents.
And that's legal?
That is legal because the average weight comes in at the, at the 10 cent mark. Based on, again, number of, of meals. So usually, usually you, you're going to have some of that five to 10 cent range increase is usually the point where people are okay with, with it. It looks like some of these prices haven't been increased for a little while, so it's probably good to revisit some of those prices, especially World Flavors, which I know I think is a much more robust lunch. But, yeah, 10 cents and 15 at the World Flavors.
So I had a question.
Yeah.
On, on your last paragraph, I must not be looking at something right because I am better with spreadsheets too. But anyway, 278 this past year and 286, that's an 8 cent change, so I think there must be.
I, I think it's based on how many meals are sold at each of those price points, not just a, an, an average. But let me, I, I would have to follow up with our food service director to find out why is it an 8 cent increase yet 10 cents across the board?
And it's mentioned 12 cents above.
Yeah.
After your listing of things, it's listed, 12 cent increase, but we're limited to 10, and then down there it indicates an 8 cent. So I might, I might be talking in a sense, sort of apples and oranges, I don't know.
Yeah, so with, right, so we are capped at a 10 cent average increase based on the number of meals sold. So that's why these calculations from the food service director come out the way they do to match that. But I understand your question of why, if it's an 8 cent increase, why are we doing 10 cents? That I need to follow up on.
And it's mentioned as 12 cents above there. So I realize we're capped off at 10, but I didn't understand what is mentioned at 12 above and 8 below unless they're talking about two different things.
They are.
In which case I don't understand.
Yep, so, and, and what came out as a 12 cent increase. Oh, no, I do see what you're saying, John. I need a follow-up.
Okay.
I need a follow-up for, for our next meeting.
I would have said something sooner, but I assumed that I just didn't understand it.
That's usually my assumption for me too, so, but, let me, let me, I gotta, I gotta do more with, with Matt to find out that answer.
Thanks.
Yeah. And so I'll just email the board with that response is.
Thank you. Okay, item six C is discovery education in science.
Now?
Now!
I'm gonna.
Oh, presentation.
Yes, Kevin. I thought you'd like that.
I'm very excited.
Does she have, does she have a remote mouse, or does she need some?
No, Jack's got her set up, her mouse turned Bluetooth, so now she's actually bringing, not a clicker.
There we go.
Or the Apple TV. She's actually moving her Bluetooth mouse over here. So she's trying a whole new technique today.
I have a USB thing at home with a, it's got a USB phone with it, with a laser pointer built in and stuff, very cheap.
Well, we'll see. I remember when Ashley said she would come tonight, I remember I was her age, and I was on the curriculum writing team.
And the curriculum director said, now, Laura, I'm going to do all the talking, and you're just going to sit there and represent the middle school curriculum writing team. And then the board could ask questions, and the first question went to me. And I looked at the curriculum director, because he told me not to say anything, and I waited to get the nod so I could answer the question. But I want, I'm very thankful that a group of science teachers has joined me tonight, and if you have any questions, they can answer those for you. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about Discovery Education, which is a science tech book. So I found your conversations about technology quite interesting, and you probably have some thoughts about that. So here we go, we'll see if we can, it's working, all right? So a statement of need is, this is the most boring slide in the world, but I think it's important because it gives you a little historical perspective on what's been going on. So we started a K-12 science team in 2013. And, and after a year of working together, we recognized a need for continuing education in the area of science for teachers who did not go to college to necessarily be science teachers. They have an elementary background, and if you're an elementary teacher, you often get one science methods class and that is it. So even the administration, along with the teachers, started asking me as the K-12 content coordinator if there was a resource available. And there was not, at the time, a good resource for us. So eventually, Discovery Education was encouraged to create a resource for teachers and a tool for sci, uh, science students that would support the next generation science standards. And so we started meeting with them, and some teachers sat on committees, and eventually, we started incorporating free trials with them. And so we did that in K-5, and we actually did some purchasing for fourth and fifth grade teachers so they could have a full year commitment to this. And then this year, we also did a free trial with our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers. So the point of this very boring slide is, is a lot of time and effort has gone into this and a lot of thought. So I'm not coming here to you today without having put a lot of effort into this. So this probably best explains Discovery Education. I think it captures what's going on in the classroom. It's a very short video clip, but I thought you as a board would be interested in it because it, it is kind of talking to school boards. I don't, Chris, are we, I'll get it.
I was at the beach, and I saw erosion deposition in a delta, and I'm like, hey, Ellen, I'm Discovery.
Science is that means of exploring our natural world, and I think the tech book does help students to see the real-world connections.
Because of the sun's like reflection, you can see the moon, so I think that the ocean would be able to still be affected because of it.
You fought very hard to have the state consider a digital interactive textbook. And now, Discovery Education's on our state adopted list. In classrooms that utilize the Discovery and Tech Book, you see higher average pass rates on our state test. You see higher average scores overall. We see more children scoring in the exemplary category. And the greatest difference has been for ESOL students, for students with disabilities, we see a remarkable increase in pass rates on state tests, students on free and reduced lunch as well. And I think that, that speaks to leveling the playing field and giving access to all children.
The Science Tech Book has a whole variety of things that you can use to differentiate. There's the Spanish version of different activities, reading messages, virtual labs, interactives, video, and it's basically meeting the student at their level and then enriching them.
I like the videos in Science Tech Book because we get to learn visually, instead of just like reading about it, and then like if we don't understand it, it virtually shows you how to do it.
When I have a paragraph read aloud, I enjoy it because you can be writing and listening to it at the same time, and it's more efficient.
They have explorations, which my students love.
You can see the moon revolving around the earth, so you can see the gravitational force.
They basically think they're playing, but they're actually learning, and I think it has helped with the engagement.
It ran into 15 minutes of our recess time, and I don't think a single child was saying, we need to go to recess now.
No, 6:00 PM is the lowest.
We had the drag pizza onto the world map, and we had the drag Boston. Since they're on the different sides of the world, when the world rotates, Italy has high times while Boston has low times.
It's a great way for students to learn, and it helps me learn.
Five-minute preps are helpful. I think the videos are helpful to the teachers. Formative assessments, I think all of that as a whole package is really helping our user to teach and promote science.
Problem solve and language arts, what word is the best in this context? So problem solve in social studies, what event caused this particular event? So you have problem solving everywhere, and if they can get that idea in science, then they can use it in all of their subject areas and within their world.
Was this a promotional video?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not denying that at all, but honestly, you know, I'm a real skeptical person, and, and you can see, that's why it took three years for us to be absolutely sure that we, that this was something we wanted to do. So we, we did get initially excited, and then we, we, we went through like, well, I'll show you. We went through a process of actually evaluating it. So we already have a science curriculum in place, okay? So this isn't a new curriculum to us, but what happened is, we found that it was right on like schedule with us as far as providing us with the same things that we were talking about. So since 2013, we've been aligning the curriculum with the next generation science standards, and Discovery Education also does that. So if you've been reading the lab report, okay, then you're probably familiar with all of these components of the next generation science standards. And then we also use the 5E model, and last year in the lab report, we focused on that for the community. Like what, what is the 5E model of instruction, but it's very inquiry-based, and it's grounded in great research all the way from the 1970s. And we also found that it made all these real-world connections to Discovery Education. Their belief is current, what is current, what is current? We're always wanting to know what is current, what's relevant. Lynn Koharski has been using the virtual field trips with her classes for quite a bit. And then also there's actual national contests, like 3M sponsors a contest along with Discovery Education. This year, they did one for high school students on the dangers of heroin. So I think it gives our, our students some ability to compete nationally as well. Did you want to say something?
Do I? Because I asked the students that I. So involving our students, I told them, you know, they know that I'm a part of the science team, and I said that this was coming before you. And I brought it back up on the screen, I said, I prepared, like you prepare for a presentation, and what were some of the virtual trips we did, all the way back to the beginning of the year? And I teach two science classes, and without hesitation. I mean, I thought, end of the day, on a Monday, I'm going to be pulling, and no. I, I, I had to tell them to stop because we weren't getting on to the rest of our lesson. But they're like, oh, remember we went to Arizona and we went to the copper mine? I'm like, yeah, exactly. And we went to the Arctic, to the tundra, and we watched the polar bear camp, and we listened to scientists and found out different types of occupations related to. And I said, okay, so what if students next year don't get to continue this in fifth grade? And they connected to all three of our science units, states of matter, the earth spheres, and now ecosystems. And they're like, what? So I took comments from them, and I, and I said to one boy, I'm like, do you mind if I use your exact words? And he said, no, go ahead. He was very proud. He said, it gives us the keys to life, that it's important not only in school, and it shows us about real life, not just in a science book. Real pictures, and then others, real pictures, videos, field trips, all enhancing nonfiction reading skills. If it's, this was really cute, this is one of our newer students. If they don't get it in the future, fifth grade students won't get the benefit of all of these, and they'll be missing out on what we got this year. They're able to see other places around the world and the science they have there. I love the way they say it. Lots of info in a fun way. The virtual field trips make you feel like you're there. For example, we get to see the super size of that Arizona copper mine, and the time that the whole process takes from the mining to the finished product somewhere else across the country. Connections to math and nonfiction reading came up over and over again. Good to use classroom technology on the big projection screen, so we really feel like we're right there and not just on our iPads or on our laptops. Interactive and online science games that make it interesting and fun learning. So they'll be very pleased to hear that I shared with you their exact words. Thanks for giving me the opportunity.
Thanks for doing that, Lynn.
Oh, all right. So, and then the last thing is, Jay Gullickson did a great project with the eighth graders, and the middle school teachers have all found this out, that when they have kids at different levels, it really personalizes their learning, because they can go to a trusted resource, and they can research whatever aspect of that particular topic they're covering that day. Lynn mentioned the connections to ELA, so it does align to all of the core ideas that we teach, but students can read at the reading level that they're at. There's domain-specific vocabulary, glossary, so those of you who read on like some kind of a e-reader and you don't know a word, that's really valuable for our students, so they can click on that word and it'll explain it to them. Text to speech, you heard the young man talk about that. Tools for note-taking and highlighting. I am, I'm a reviewer for the forward exam for the science component, and the forward exam allows students to highlight and note-take as they're taking the forward exam, so this is also a great tool for them to be prepared for that. In this picture, this is one of Dee Schrader's students. You can see she's got headphones on, so she's using the text to speech, and she's taking her own notes on paper. So where some students might prefer that over taking notes on the computer, it provides all that. And then, like Lynn mentioned too, we, we need to give our students opportunities to write in science, and this provides a tool for that too. So this is the part I think that you're going to find pretty cool, is because it's digital, we have a really powerful resource in just one location, okay? Not like, you know, the old textbook sets that we used to buy with all of the other components that went with it. But this is what makes it great, is it's regularly updated, so it's not old news. And Lynn Leroy asked me to check how often it's updated, and it's updated daily. Then they do mass overhauls mid-year and at the end of the year for big projects. Like this year, they worked on their explorations, and they wanted to improve those. The previous year, they did all of their STEM work. The simulations, when we were talking to them, another teacher said, well, I don't want my kids to do simulations. I want them to do all hands-on labs. And they gave us an example of a simulation you wouldn't want your students to do in class. And they said, what if you had an ecosystem and you wanted to see the effects of changing pH? Would you give, give your kids a fishbowl with fish in it and ask them to pour acid in it and watch the fish die? You wouldn't. But you could do a simulation where nobody would be really emotionally upset about what they did, you know? But they would see the dangers of toxins in an environment. Lots of great digital presentation tools like Lynn spoke towards. Kathy Glick emailed me and said she just loves the videos with the first graders, they're just super engaging. And this is a tool that we used to have here, was called E-Backpack, where you could send out lessons and it would come back, and it was really a nice format so teachers and students could communicate. That's part of Discovery Ed. So I talked to you in the beginning is about the teachers needing a resource. And what I like about this is, when you go into a model lesson, it gives the teacher all the content background that they need, and it also tells you what student misconceptions might be. Like, for example, we all know one of the biggest misconceptions is that students think that the earth is closer to the sun during the summer. So they prepare the teachers for that ahead of time, so they can redirect their learning to make it work. And then they're also going to provide staff development along with the contract. So we just talked about, like, our teachers need training. This is really, really important, and I, if you read the article that I attached to the board proposal, it talked about the need for staff development. They also have a component where they will train teachers to be leaders in their schools, so we could have a leader in each, each building that would be the go-to person for this. And we have had, you know, new staff come in. Ashley came in while we were already part of the K-12 team, and she's, she's one of many new teachers to our science team. So it would have been nice to have a resource like that. And then, like Lynn is going from fifth grade to kindergarten next year. Allison Schnorr is going from second grade to third grade. So it's, it's time-consuming to always be learning a new curriculum, and this gives them the support that they need. And this is where the forward exam comes in. The forward exam is not like the tests that we took that were very content-based for science. They're very skills-based now and reasoning-based. So Discovery Education, I think, is the tool that supports that, having seen Discovery Ed and the forward exam. Our students need to feel comfortable doing formative and summative assessments on a digital tool. And then here's the staff development. They have lots of classes that come along with it. And here's the cost factor. So the cost is $48 per student over a six-year period. And you pay more heavily the first year, and then the years after that, it's less expensive. So even if our population fluctuates, the contract would be locked into what our population is this year. I would guess that's the thing you might have the most, and questions on. And then that's what the screen looks like. I just put that in there, so you might want to see it. So we already have these units in place, but what this does is give our, our students more resources for this and our teachers more background information for it. and our teachers more background information for it.
I have a few questions. Is it all online or is any of it downloadable?
You can download it. So teachers can turn anything into a paper copy and they can even edit things.
Okay, so and there's probably not then a instructional or a core textbook or paper product provided, right?
Correct.
Okay. So a little bit of concern about how frequently they can update it because from personal experience, when you highlight things and then they send you like a highlight, you have a PDF textbook or something and they, and they, they update your version, all your highlighted stuff is gone. So I just.
Oh, they're not updating the students. They're updating the background.
Do you understand what I mean? That's what I, that's what I'm asking is because I didn't understand if they were to, whatever they have in their, they end up highlighting, does that end up disappearing?
No.
If there's an update that gets fed to them, you know?
No, and even teachers, like one of the things, they, they've really based this on a lot of teacher feedback. I'm going to step aside because I got Jody here too, because she's been all part of the whole tech process. Because I said, I really want to make sure everything works before we spend some money. So one of the feedback Discovery Ed got from teachers, they said, but we don't want you to take away anything that we were already using just because you're updating it. And so it's all archived too. So it's, the, the teachers are not going to be impacted when they make changes, only in a positive way. And the students would not lose their.
Should we get some stuff archived locally or just?
Yeah, you can actually create your own folder. So when we did, they even, even when we were doing this with this little pilot program with the 4th and 5th grader teachers, they still gave us staff development. And so they showed us how the teachers can create their own folders, just like you would, you know, on your computer. And they can save all of their materials.
You should be able to do that as well.
Yes.
Okay, and then I had one more. I'm sure I'll come to it.
So we, you researched it for four years and we test drove it this year?
We, this year, we paid for 4th and 5th grade teachers to actually run through it at 4th and 5th grade teachers at Hales Corners Elementary and the 4th grade teachers at Edgerton.
Okay. And then what grades are going to use it?
I'm asking for 1st through 8th grade. So we have continuity. The kindergarten, see, this is where we like trying to be like upfront, is this really usable? The kindergarten teachers didn't feel that it was, you know, they would use it enough in order to make it worthwhile because they were dealing with non-readers at the time.
So about 1,400 students at 48 bucks, $70,000?
Mike's got the numbers.
682-56.
Bingo, baby. Man, I'm not that far off. All right. Very good. Thank you. And thank all of you as well.
For, yeah.
Spread out over six years. Yep, yep.
Hey Laura.
Hi.
Got a question. So it's Lexile reading scores, right? So how?
You guys might have to help me with this one, okay?
Okay. If they're, hi guys. If they're, if a student is in the room and they're accessing the lesson for the day. And if you've got a student on each end of the learning spectrum, that you have someone who has maybe a little bit more difficulty comprehending or you've got someone who's been there, done that, hand me the AP chemistry set, I'm ready to go. How can you tailor that same lesson to both ends of those spectrums if it's downloaded to you? How are you going to make those adjustments?
For reading level, when you go, when the kids are in the Discovery Ed, there's a, it's, even like if Mrs. Alexopoulos said, let's read this lesson, let's read this background information. Then the student can pick Level A, B, or I think it's called Legacy.
And the teacher can assign certain students certain things.
So that, that they're kind of, it really is tailored for them. So they're still getting the same content, but the vocabulary used in one might be a little bit more at a, at a 6th grade reading level. But another one could be a preschool reading level, but you're getting the same content in there, right? Are there any other provisions in the program for extensions or remedial work?
That's, that's what the whole thing is. Yeah. It's like, if you have one topic, like it's not linear. It's not, you're going to do this and this and that. So you could go, could explore in many different directions. And that's the beauty of it.
So I'm kind of picturing Mary Poppins' carpet bed. Pulling out and pulling out for whatever the child needs. Okay. That's pretty flexible.
Just to summarize even more than you already did, so we're talking about, we've got a virtual science interactive textbook that is going to update all the time for 1st grade through 8th grade and possibly further, pretty much, right? For as simple as I can put it. I think that sounds fantastic and I really appreciate that. You said, you went into all the detail. You, that's why it's taken three years and it just, it's a great idea. And I love what you've done with it so far.
No, I really liked it. Thank you for your presentation. And if there was something like this, when I was in grade school taking science, I maybe would have liked science. Because not so much.
I might have needed a fun teacher too, now.
Maybe she'd just come sit in at one of your classes, you know? Well, that, you know, when you all come to the board meeting and ask for something, I'm like, yeah, they get it. Because you're good and well, you do. But I couldn't help but think of my little, you know, grandma daycare.
All takes.
For me, when they're as good as these guys are.
Can you pause this?
I don't feel like I've ever come here and asked you guys for anything.
Usually you're getting some sort of award or something.
Are we missing the point? I said they're great at what they do. That's what I, they're great at what they do. Okay, so I couldn't help but think of my, you know, grandma daycare here. I got a little four. He just turned five-year-old and he's, you know, on my lap lately. He wants to learn about great white sharks. And, you know, he doesn't go to a textbook, although we read lots of books. But he wanted to go to that video. We, you know, you can go to cams. So I'm like, okay, let's, taught the kid how to Google. Now he's in there every day Googling great white sharks. So this is very much in alignment, I think, with what our kids, some of us are doing at home. And it's going to be interactive and updated. So I think it's great. Very exciting.
Yeah, somebody ask Ashley a question, just so she can, so she can stand up here 30 years from now.
I've been here before.
Okay, okay, all right. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you?
My two other questions, sorry. So one is, so like at the end of the six years, then, you know, I assume by then we're solidly booked, then is there like, is there like just a continuation fee each year? Or is it, well, now that we got you through the first six years, this next year is going to be a big chunk again and then smaller chunks or, you know what I mean? How does the pricing go beyond six years?
Can't answer that question.
Okay, yeah, that'd be something I'd like to know. And then how, did you look at other packages? I assume you did, but I'd rather not make assumptions.
I am the representatives for science education in the state of Wisconsin for this region. So I serve on a lot of state committees and boards and go to a lot of meetings. And every curriculum coordinator or content specialist like me, we come together and we're like, there's nothing out there that's good, that's supporting this. So what we did look at, you can, you can buy kits. They cost a fortune. And they make you buy all the supplies all over again, even if you don't need them. And the kits were not updated. They've been stagnant for quite a while and they're slow to update them. And then Paula and I went and looked at one and she said, if we gave these to the kids, they wouldn't even want it. It was so antiquated looking. So that's why we started writing our own units.
Sure.
So, and we, we are still believers in our own units. In fact, we have teachers contacting all, us all the time for help. It's just we know we need some more support, some underlying support to really make it top-notch.
So I noticed it wasn't checked whether it was or wasn't in the budget for, for next year. But that gave, that started me thinking, would this, spending the money on this cause us to have to do any less hands-on? Because there are hands-on experiments and that kind of stuff you guys do. So would it cause us to have to do any less hands-on, either because of time or because of expense than, than the kids get to do now?
We don't ever want to replace hands-on, ever. That's the beauty of the school district. My three kids went through here and they got a great science education at the elementary level, middle level, and high level. So I think that's something that a lot of school districts can say. School districts can talk about their middle schools and high schools, but they can't talk about the elementary schools like we do. When I would do, at the end of, at the end of every year for our K-12 science team, I would do a reflection movie of all the things we've done. And I said, what we're really good at is we're really good at a stage we call the explorer stage. We're always letting our kids explore and investigate and we will never go away from that because that's what we believe in at Whitwell.
Sure. So I think, I'm a big science guy, I think, so you know, and, and I, I think this looks awesome. I, I support it. I think it looks good. I think kids get a lot out of it.
So if I did the math right, over six years, it's eight dollars a, a year a kid.
Yeah. Laura, you're off the hook now. What are we going to do about the money, Mike?
It's coming out of teaching and learning budget. So it's not even touching any of the building budgets. Their teaching and learning budget is pretty much, every year just kind of starts over with what the needs are. So it's a different area of budget.
Or we do for like a materials purchase that we wouldn't have to do now if we take this instrument instead? A textbook refresh purchase or anything like that?
No, no. I think what it's more of is taking a look at what was in the teaching and learning budget and understanding where we have some room to implement some things.
So it's due.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. And to your point, Laura, if you'd like to bring Ashley back to present what happens in year seven. John, I appreciate that. Okay, thank you all for sitting for almost three hours of meeting and going through it. So thank you.
My husband said he'd be asleep when I got home. And I said, no, you won't. You'll be up. But now I think he might be right.
All right, so item seven is items for future consideration. As a reminder, no discussion or action will be taken at this time. Do any board members have topics that they would like to discuss in the future? Okay. Question eight, item eight, excuse me, is board member announcements. I just have a couple of first starters. I just want to thank Mr. Benjamin, Mr. Crye, Mrs. Winters, Mr. Relic, Dr. Olson, and everyone else involved with the NHS induction ceremony on Friday. It was a great event. And then also to recognize the NHS seniors, didn't Jackie, didn't they say over 500 service hours so far this year, this school year? So it's fantastic. So they put a lot of time and thought into it. Mr. Relic used, quoted from The Outliers, a book by Malcolm Gradwell, which I was excited for because he's one of my favorite authors. So it was a great event. Julie loved it. And my youngest son was there too. And he's like, this is a pretty cool event. I thought it was going to be boring like all the other things to go to. But I really enjoyed it. So that was fantastic. So thank you all for doing that. And then I just want to thank Mr. Weisberger, the Actors Actress and Rest of the Theater Program, for a tremendous spring musical. It was phenomenal. That was good. Excellent. Thank you all. And hopefully they can come for the next meeting and put on a small performance and we can discuss it. Thank you. Any other, oh, and then one other, I apologize. We're going to have a board workshop in June.